Okay, ready?
One second.
One minute, okay.
Okay, we should be all set.
Okay, motion to call the meeting to order. Is there a second?
One second.
We'll call, please.
Trustee Lickin.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, does anybody have any collective interest with an item on the agenda tonight, or anything to disclose about an agended item?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
And I do not. Also, please silence your cell phones. Just a heads up. Okay. And Dorothea, would you please read the open meeting compliance certification?
Sure. Okay, the public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they appear in the meeting, and also in general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is on a specific agenda item. It is not a debate, a deposition, or a panel discussion. Speakers must step to the front of the room if physically able. Alternately, they may provide comments from where they are seated. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to comment. This may differ by platform, but is typically accomplished through the raise your hand feature. And that is what we're using tonight, is Zoom. So if you wish to speak, raise your hand. If you wish for me to ask the question, put it in the Q and A. If you put it in chat, I don't pay attention to the chat. Thank you. Also, let me catch my breath.
I know, you've been running around here.
Also, if you do comment in the Q and A, please put your name and address so I can read it for the board. Thank you. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with permission of the mayor, only interrupt a speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board by written communications to villageclerk@villageofpittsburgh.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes for that meeting. At the center's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to a three-minute timeline. If printing materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the public record. Private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited.
Wow, thank you. Catch your breath after that, too.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so let's start in with, please, the treasurer's report.
Wow, you guys get to me quick.
I know, I know.
All right, well, we'll start with the bill pay. Do we have any questions regarding the bill pay?
No. I don't.
Nope, okay, well then I'll entertain a, I'll take a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve of them as submitted.
One second. We're tied.
I gotta go to Lily.
We're tied, it's right to the line.
Okay, trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Lickin.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. And we'll be moving on. And you have your December financials in the packet, and props to say.
That's great, thank you.
Nothing too enlightening in December. It's kind of similar to November and everything. Things will start getting interesting as we go into the second part of the year. One thing you will see different in this report, we did have a few negatives, and I addressed them in the budget transfers at the end, but you'll see a negative 18.5. That's not going to go away, okay? We're dealing with our accountant and Williamson Law Book, they felt this was the best way right now to deal with the ARPA funds that we use towards Rand Creek.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it'll come out of the deferred revenue we received from the ARPA, and then we'll transfer it to fund downs to cover that, is what I'm told. I'm still not happy with that method, but it's in there because I have to show it in the budget because we expended it. And it puts the other line negative, which technically that line wasn't negative because the board approved the ARPA funds to be used for the project. Does that make sense? I'm still not thrilled it shows negative, and I wish I could have the budget offset.
Yeah.
But really, we haven't gotten a way around amending that budget in that way. So I'm still working with them, like I said, I'm not happy, but it's going to stand out, and there's really not a lot I can do until somebody gives me the right maneuver with the software.
Well, the good news is the money's there.
Right, if the money is there, the board approved the expenditure.
Yeah.
I just don't show the revenue on the other end.
Right.
And how to put it in there. It's taking a little more technical expertise than I have.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, our software is very limited.
Yeah, it is, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Just to clarify, so the 18, 18.5, that's the, mostly the cost, the consultants for preparing the proposal?
No, 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 that's the Rand Creek.
The Rand Creek, okay.
That's the Rand Creek project, the board approved, 18.54. It might come in less because we have to build the homeowners. I'm not sure that percentage, I'm working with everybody involved to get that right.
Okay.
But for right now, we got billed, we had to pay it, we do have the revenue to cover it, it's just I can't show it appropriately as I would love.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any major concerns in any of the items? As I said, everything's looking pretty good. Sewer head, no negatives, sewers are always doing great.
Should we say that account is squashed?
Yes.
I know, I couldn't resist. It's been blocked.
So if I can have an approval on the December financials, and then an approval for the budget transfers as presented?
Several motions.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the December financials as presented.
One second.
Second. Oh, she seconded, she seconded.
That's okay.
She beat you on the second.
She did, yeah, to stick her head around.
Okay, we'll call, please.
Trustee Lickin.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passed. Can I have the approval on the budget transfers?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers as presented.
Lily can take this one.
Okay. Lily's second.
Tishiba?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay, it's me. Trustee Spencer, aye. Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Lickin.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I just wanted to say thank you, too, for getting more caught up with the financials as we're approaching the budget season.
Oh, we are right on target. January's statement hasn't arrived yet, so I can't do, it's not here, so I'm thrilled. Actually, I guess anybody who loves math, they love balancing. That's a lot of fun for me. So, if you don't mind, let me continue.
Yeah, you don't want.
Roll, roll.
Now, everybody's going to say, "Dorothea, you presented this sheet at the last meeting." Yes, I did, and then they brought me a different contract in, and Dorothea said I could have signed something the board didn't approve, so I'm bringing it back to you again for approval, just because, again, just on the safe side. It's the same terms and everything else, it just had more language. Jeff did review it.
Okay, and Jeff reviewed it and, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and anything he would change, he really doesn't think Tishiba would change, so.
All right, so I will make a motion to approve the revised contract for Toshiba.
One second.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Lickin.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passed. Sorry, just making sure where I am in my, this is where you guys.
Cleaning service, I think.
Uh, diversity training. I just wanted to touch on that, we did talk about this. The, but when I left it, the last time I presented the company to do it, I sent the information out to the board, trustee Keating was going to review it and let me know if you were good. I haven't heard, so I'd really like to jump on this. Is there any problem with me moving forward? What would the board like to do?
I'd like to move forward. Do we have a quote, or?
Yes, I forwarded to you, it's like.
Okay, maybe I, it was before.
I think it was the meeting Lily was missing.
You might have been, I'll be sending.
Yeah, I just realized that.
Yeah, that was, I did forward the quote, I re-.
Yeah, okay, that's right, I probably saw it, like.
Yeah, it was like $600 to get it started.
Right, and they lowered.
It's just a local.
Okay.
We localized it because.
And they lowered a setup fee or something?
Yeah, they lowered a couple things because we're Pittsburgh-based, so.
Okay.
It's a computer training, it's a good place. We have an employee come in, it's a good place to start. We'll sit at a computer, they have to finish it, they'll get a certificate. We'll put all our employees through it. We still would like to have someone come in and do the training, but at least it's a start.
Okay.
Okay, so if the board's good, I'd like to move forward.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to approve the new contract with, parent, for diversity training.
Thank you.
I don't remember what.
You're second, Lily?
Second.
It's just going between the two of us.
I think so, I think it's ping pong here.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Lickin.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, cleaning service.
You guys don't want to keep doing it yourselves?
No, we had a little issue with the previous cleaning service, so we decided to move on. We got new quotes. We are bringing to you one of the best quotes we had. The price did increase a month by $50, $50, which is reasonable, considering I felt we were very reasonable before. That's three times the week, the basic cleanings, and we'll have them come in and do a really good clean to start because we need it.
They come in after hours, or?
Yes, they come in after hours, after hours and weekends, so.
And you guys won't have to do it?
No. Not that we might picking up after ourselves, but there's certain things.
And they do carpet cleaning from?
Yeah, actually, this is the company we have used to do the carpets, and they did the floor and the waxing and the stripping, and they did a really great job, and they've been dependable, so we figured, you know, not to put your eggs in all one basket, but if something's working, let's go with it.
Yeah, that's my thought, because they really have been, you know, responsive.
Yeah.
Which has been great.
Yeah, so if I can have permission to sign this contract and move this forward?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second.
Trustee Lickin.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. And real quick, just a note, I'm going to ask Zach and the crew to hang up the Black History Month banner that we received last year for February, so just.
That's right, January is coming.
Your calendar. And I think that is really all I have in the clerk section, is there anything the board needs of me that I forgot?
No, I think, all good.
I'm good.
Yeah. Okay.
My crew's already on it.
Yeah, okay. Let's see. Is that Jacque coming? Oh, it's Jacque, yeah, there's Jacque coming in. The proclamations, we're going to, we're printing it out on nice paper, we'll be seeing, you know, it's going to look nice, so we'll have that ready at our budget meeting, just for you guys to sign, because we want to make it look nice, so, so not here on the agenda, so. Next up, we'll let Jacque get settled.
We'll do the minute, well, since.
Yeah, why don't we do some minutes, exactly?
I can learn one.
Sure.
Yeah.
We have December 15 minutes for approval.
I didn't have any corrections.
I was going to say, I didn't receive anything.
I just found one as I was looking.
Oh, stop looking.
The last page, resident Art Pures, his name is missing the S at the end.
Okay, fire.
Good cut, right there.
Good editing, there you go.
Okay, Alnica, motion to approve the December 15 minutes as amended?
One second.
We'll call, please.
Okay, trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Trustee Lickin.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. I think we're pretty much product, it might be a point set in, but we're good, and January's almost there, so.
You guys are on fire.
Yes. That's where I want to be. All right, thank you so much, I'll go stop talking.
Okay, so next up is the special use permit application for Thirsties.
Yeah, that's.
It's not Q.
Oh, he isn't here, should we?
He's not here. Interesting.
I don't know, let's see, so how about the non-municipal use permit for the Pittsburgh Little League Annual Parade?
Okay, I'll talk.
Yeah, sorry, I know, you had a little break, you got one step of your snapple there.
Okay, Pittsburgh League Annual Parade, this is an event we have every year, annual, so it's going to take place on May 6th, so they're asking for approval, they provided their insurance as requested, actually, there was a lot more insurance paid work, I'm late with the first page, which you know we received. I think we go ahead and approve, we don't need the 45-day wait.
I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit for the Pittsburgh Little League Parade, Annual Parade, on May 6th.
One second.
We'll call.
Trustee Lickin.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
What time is it?
For parade?
10:00, 10:00 AM, I think, on, yeah.
Done.
10:00 AM.
Yep, and they leave from Southern.
We might be the VPW assistant, if you think. Want me to have him touch base with you?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Okay.
Let's see, okay, it's still not here.
Too early for the public hearing.
Well, I know, so let's see, why don't we, you know, I'll just talk about the upcoming grant opportunities, we can skip down to that, because it's just, I did a Zoom meeting with, let's see, it was the Canalways Association, and, this morning, and you have a copy of the grant that's issued, the cycle's open now. It's a small grant, you know, it's anywhere from $500, I think, $500 up to $24,000, depending. It is matching funds, but they've changed the types of things that the grant can be used for, and it's far more flexible for like smaller, little sort of plugging-in kind of uses, and they actually will give us a grant for porta potties. Yeah.
That's huge.
I know, big news, I know, I knew, I say, I knew.
Expensive.
They are, they're expensive, and also because of, you know, we, now we're putting them out earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, we really get requests like as soon as that weather starts to warm up a little bit, so they're earlier, and now with the PGA Championship coming into town, you know, there's so many things going on, I think we're even going to need more
and more. Fancy ones for that.
I know, we do.
You can get the trailer.
I know, a little something, but it might be something that we can look into. The grant closes on the 24th, but it's a pretty straightforward grant, and I think that might be something to look into for us to, you know, provide just as another, you know, better amenity, really, for everybody down there, the chain place between the regatta, paddle and four.
The, do we contribute at all to paddle and four, to like any cost of that? Okay, because that was one of the first things that I thought, okay.
It's the towns, yeah. So we, the grant, would we specifically ask porta porta potties, or would you say we generally? Okay. No, it's real specific, yeah, like, you know, we need, you know.
A moth of porta potties. We need preventions?
Yeah.
Isn't that an amenity that we're not porta potties?
I think for the first time through, the porta potties is kind of a slam dunk.
All right, sounds good.
No, because it's something, you know, we know, we, first of all, I think we really should expand it, and also have, we went, didn't we have like just two cleanings a week, and then we upped it to three?
It was the cleaning that was the issue, I think.
We ended it before cleaning to be.
Yeah, and then we ended it before, yeah, so I think, you know, we need to kind of really do that properly.
And the match is easy, because you already.
Yeah, we already, you already have a budget line for it, so that's our match going forward.
Okay.
You know, so.
We've already budgeted for that.
We budgeted anyway, they're in your budget.
Yeah.
So the matching funds are there already?
We can.
Yeah, so I'm thinking, you know, it's kind of one of those, while we're in there, let's just see what we can get something over the transom, so, yeah, if you're all in agreement, then we'll go ahead and, you know, make that paperwork happen, and, you know, throw our hat in the ring.
Do we need a motion for that?
Just to be clear, are we, can we see the application and have that brought back to the board before we submit?
The way, I think we can.
We have a meeting in between?
Yeah, we can print it out now, we, seriously, we go, we have a secured grant portal, and you couldn't, I don't know, I think we can print them out now, I think they changed how you can access it, because you used to have to go in and log in and do everything online, and then it'd be captured. I don't, I'll double check on that, okay?
Yeah, I'd just like to see what we're submitting before we can agree on that. I'd be happy to prepare the paperwork and bring it back to the board, and then vote to submit it, once we see how it's written.
Oh, yeah, okay, cool.
Does it have to be for the upcoming season, or the existing season?
Well, it said you had to spend it by 2020.
There's a two year, you have two years from the date of the grants awarded, and I'm not sure exactly what the date is when the grant will be awarded. I'm hoping we'll make it this year, there's still stuff next year, you know, I just think it's good just to get in the hopper for this, depending on when we get them.
Yeah, so if we could use what we've already spent, or.
I don't know if we'll be able to use that, I think future spending, I think.
Yeah, I think it's.
But the point is, it's already a.
Yeah.
Get more for a bang for a buck.
Right, right.
This is such a straightforward thing, I don't know that I need to see it, I would be comfortable making a motion to approve it, assuming we're applying for porta potties.
That's what we're doing. But in fact, if we can print it out, I'll print it out, I just, it's just the way it was set up when we used it last year was different, but I believe they've changed the level of access and how we may be able to print it.
I'm still okay with going ahead with this, as long as it's for temporary, already the budgeted items, that's.
Sure, seems like a straightforward thing.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Was that a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion to submit a grant for the cost of porta potties. What, with the Canal Corporation?
Yeah.
Very Canalway Grants? I'll just keep rambling until you tell me to stop for something.
No, that's the.
Is it Canal Corporation, New York State?
Yeah.
No, is it?
It says New York State.
New York State Canal Corporation.
Yeah.
A second.
Yeah. Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Lickin.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, let's see, I wonder if he's coming?
Thirsties?
Yeah. Well, I know, maybe, thank you.
Right, do the.
Yeah, that's, yeah, why don't we go right to that, too? And that's item number 10 on the agenda. The town, and we, I brought it to the board last fall, has a plan to establish a park where across, gagging across the street from us, at the town parking lot entrance there, you know, Holiday House is there in the summer, and I thought, because it's so high-profile, really, it's right in the heart of our village, it would be good for us to have a public charrette, get residents, you know, involved, and I just speak with Bill Smith, he's all up for that, so we just wanted to, you know, bring it back to the board and maybe set a date when we can have a public charrette, and I'd like it, you know, I think we came up with a February date?
I think we're leaning towards the 21st, there didn't seem to be anything on the village calendar that timeframe.
Because I want to do it in the spring, and I want to make sure that we have adequate time for residents to have input, so.
This is the one he talked about when he came to speak.
Right, exactly.
There were two things, okay.
Yeah.
And it would be held here, or at the town?
We could, we probably would hold it here, or possibly the Fisher Room, depending if we could get it, but, you know, just to.
Yeah, see what we.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just have a question about this, to clarify, the term charrette usually has a particular use in land use, right? As a informal get-together involving a lot of residents before something like the conference of planning process occurs, and we have those, when we did the con-plan. Is, are we using the word charrette in the same sense here, where it's the preliminary stage of other planning activities, or is this being used differently, where essentially it's the only opportunity for input that we're going to have?
Bill Smith actually used the term charrette, so, I mean, you know, I said, do we, can we have input into this design? He said, absolutely, you could have a charrette, that's what he used. We could call, what, we, let's come up with something else to call it. Public, public discussion, public input, how about that? We'll do that, let's do that.
He's asking for input, correct?
Yes, yes, so let's do that.
I guess, so to be even more clear about this, it sounds like by having this, he's essentially saying we're not being given the opportunity to go through the site plan process and other review processes for the park that's there. It's basically just, you know, have an informal walkthrough, the idea, and then they're going to go ahead and do it.
I can't speak for that, I think that would be a discussion that you should have with Bill, and we certainly can follow up even in the public setting as well, for sure.
That would be an information session, if he's just going to be telling, if the town is going to be presenting, is what you're saying, versus, so let's call it what it is, or.
Yeah, I mean, is this?
Sounds like he's, he's looking for input, it sounds like from what, when he came here.
Yeah, and that was part of the discussion. So, I think we should schedule the date, and then get additional clarification, how's that? Because I think we need to go ahead with this, because I think they are anxious to
If they have a reason that they are not going through what we call our normal channels, planning and zoning board and so forth, the site plan, and the reason why they would not be, I think that an explanation is...
For sure.
Right?
Absolutely.
At least if they're not doing that and this is the only opportunity.
Yeah.
So that question ought to be asked sooner rather than later if...
Need to go before.
And it's going to be up to this board to weigh the balancing test of whether or not you're going to apply to our municipal.
It's a high-profile project in our village.
Do you know if they, have they applied? Like, because the board or the project next to the arboretum, the new trail, they did go before our planning board.
Yeah, I remember they did.
They did not.
How about this? Would you...
Right, for that, the one, the pavilion. Right, but we did do the balancing test.
Okay.
Yes, we did. After the fact, really. So, which was okay.
Yeah. Staying ahead of this one.
So the question is, how soon should that reach out happen? Because they want to do it this spring.
I agree. So since you brought it up, how about, can you follow up with Bill and let's get some information and report that? That'd be great.
I almost think it'll be a question from the board.
Well, but I would let him know that that's what we want to talk about.
Might be that we want to ask him formally.
Okay, okay.
Should go over our planning board?
No, no, just asking.
On the 21st, is that what you're saying at that date?
I would think so, you know, even coming from this meeting, you know, what, are you planning with the site plan? If not, you know, maybe we should discuss it as a board and make a determination.
So should we send that formally in a letter to him?
I think that's...
Okay. So let's send them, we'll do that. Okay.
Shall we do that by motion? It's not needed.
No. No.
Sure.
I'll make a motion that the board issues a request regarding whether they will apply to the...
Say our zoning regulations.
To apply to our zoning regulations for the proposed park.
A second. Trustee Lincoln?
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair?
Hi.
Trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Mayor Palmer?
All right. And can you help us put together that letter?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we can send, do you want us to send it out to you all just before we submit it? Or, I mean, I think it's kind of a direct question.
Yeah.
Are you coming through, are you coming through our process or not? It's really a question.
Then once we know, we need to decide what to do.
Yeah, yeah.
And I agree, I echo what Renee said, you know, they did go through the process with the parking of our plus quadrant. I feel like that was a great process. I was on the planning board when that occurred. I thought it had a great result. And my personal hope is that we would apply the same process here for the best result for everybody.
Yeah, it's a high-profile project.
Did they actually go through permitting?
Or was it a courtesy kind of?
Yeah, I'm wondering here.
You were, you said on the...
I believe there is a site plan that was approved on that project.
You were involved in that?
I was on the planning board.
Yeah.
I was, it was C of A, H P B. But there has been some, I know we got a question in the audience, but there have been some projects that they have just come in on an informal basis. I think the library that came through on an informal basis.
The library, wow. That's a big one, okay.
The pavilion did not, didn't do anything.
Didn't do, oh, I thought you meant it came before our board as a...
I'm talking about they came to the H P B.
Oh, the other boards, okay.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, Dan?
Just quick on a David, there's only, it sounds to me like supervisor is asking just as a courtesy, which I appreciate, the village residents just get input. So if they presented a preliminary design, it wouldn't vacate the process, but they may want the input to then have the design they would take through the process with the zoning board. So I would hope you still would schedule that as soon as possible for the public to get an idea of what they're thinking. Many heads or some type of good ideas come out of it.
Yeah, yeah, and I think...
Before boards.
Yeah, I think that's our goal and I think, you know, this way we're formally asking them to make sure that they're...
I think they go ahead and schedule a public time.
I think that's what we're doing.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and write a letter.
I think we're doing both things.
I hope we're doing both things. My assumption was that...
Yeah, you're exactly right.
Trustee Leighton was raising a entirely different issue.
Yeah. So I think we're, I agree with you. I think we're all in agreement, actually, so thank you for that.
The reason I'm raising the issue is around the timeframe. And if, you know, we're going to actually go through this a little bit, we're going to get kicked off. I mean, just ballparking it, we're just governing, you know, it seems like a project that probably would raise a lot of issues. But I wouldn't want to increase the floor, I'm just thinking about the balance after in my mind, but it really isn't almost purely municipal purpose.
Yeah. And it's great, it's great that they're wanting to...
So I don't think we'll do it in a chilling way. It's just, it's just, we got to sort of follow the rules. Probably the rules are going to lead to, perhaps the rules, I didn't speak to the board, you know, lead to a, not one. So Mr. Clifford, do you know what he was supposed to do?
Yeah. So the next date up was the 21st of February.
The board was going to that date.
Does that work for everybody?
Does this have to, was this a board action or was this a public action? I mean, were we looking to tie this to a board? The charrette to a board meeting night?
No, this is a separate, this is separate.
Just totally...
Okay.
So we can really focus on it.
Oh, you're looking for, I'm sorry.
Public input.
No, no, I know that. Why do you, what do you...
Just a date. We're just getting everybody to agree, like, 21st works over February.
And it may be that they host it, right? Are they organizing it?
Or we can host it here.
I just meant it would be good to know who's...
I think we're working out the people.
I think we can, that's administrative and I think we can handle that. I think it's just coming up the date we all agree to. And it does look like it's February 21st, so let's work with that date.
So we have a date issued for it.
Yeah. Okay, so that's good. And I know there's no town meeting that night as well, so I know that folks will be available from the town, so that's why that date was proposed. Okay, so, good evening. Next up, we have a special use permit application for Thirsty.
Yes.
Run up. Hi.
I'm Stan Clifford, how are you?
We need your address.
80 North Country Club Drive, Rochester, 14618.
Hi.
I'm late.
Thank you for getting over here.
My apologies.
It's all good. No, believe me, we're just rolling through the...
Sure, there's other areas to fill.
No, no worries at all. So what's going on?
Well, I think probably a lot, but I guess for the purposes of this meeting, I was advised to submit a special use permit because I met with the historical review board on a few things and some changes I wanted to make, or additions on the back patio and the way I'm zoned now wouldn't allow me for that. So I think it's kind of looping back around and going through the steps to, in order to place myself, position myself where we can, you know, make some additions or improvements, things of that nature.
Okay. Anything else to add? No, not right now? Okay.
Can I just clarify then?
Keep going.
Unless there are other comments. So my understanding, Jeff, you sent an email explaining this. It sounds like going from a pre-existing non-conforming use, this would then cover the current use with a special permit, which is up to date with the current zoning code. And that would avoid the problem of pre-existing non-conformal use not being able to be expanded or changed in any way. And any intended changes would be subject to a review process as appropriate, right?
Yes.
Great.
It's good we can. I think it kind of stemmed from, I approached the village historical review board to discuss a pergola. And that's kind of how I learned of, you know, the steps.
Yeah, the process.
Because it's all new, so that's kind of, that's a wrap.
And that's within the footprint of the existing business and all of that.
Yes, correct.
Do we need to have that amended on here? Well, he doesn't have the approval yet.
Well, no, but I would think that the public ought to know that it's one of the things he's looking for. So I would suggest that he amend his application, just to be clear that he's also, he's going to change the operation by adding a pergola. I'm not really convinced that he has to do that. It's just, it's sort of, he clearly can't do it with a pre-existing non-conformal.
Right.
Whether if he had an existing special permit, he'd have to come in for a pergola to change it, I don't know. Certainly site plan he'd have to come in for. So just to cover everything, I told Mr. Clifford, put it in your application and then...
And I was, I meant to amend it and then I lost track of the date, so that's why I would have amended that and included that in my submission.
But it's going over where people sit anyway, right?
Yes, correct.
So it's just a pergola over where people are already...
That's correct.
No seating change.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Are we allowed to make that amendment on his application tonight?
His direction, the board's going to do it.
Okay.
And with that amendment, you could move to public hearing if you so chose.
Yeah, so if you added it in as an amendment to add that pergola, then...
The federal pergola, yeah.
Somebody could make a motion to...
I spelled it right.
P E R G O L I.
It never looks right, I bet.
We'll get the gist of it. We can correct it in the minutes, I'm very good at...
Okay, so as amended then, somebody could make a motion to go to, set a date for public hearing?
That would be February 23rd.
On February 23rd?
I'll make a motion to move this application.
So moved. Or has somebody else moved?
Nope, you're good.
You jumped on it.
She can do it.
Yeah.
That's good.
I'll second it.
Now we're going to read right. All right, here we go. Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Trustee Leighton.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Mayor Palmer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
So that's going to have a public hearing.
Yes.
For the public, have whatever input the public want to have.
Okay.
And then the trustees will consider whatever they need to consider and...
And would it be my best interest to provide the trustees supporting documents prior to that or I show up with that and if people want to ask?
If I was sitting here in your chair, I hope the trustees of the most interaction you should take is perp.
Yes.
And then we would put it in the packet for the public to see.
Great, okay.
That way they could comment or, you know, anything like that.
One's coming.
Yes, okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Finally get a legal after 50 years.
I have no idea where you're at.
We're making him an honest man.
Thank you.
Thanks again. All righty, let's see, where are we? We're kind of jumping around, aren't we? So, well, we could go to the public hearing for the proposed local law. Yeah, yeah.
Is this the code?
Yeah, yeah. Code updates, yeah.
So we are, we need a motion open the public hearing?
Do we open it for, we're changing two laws over here, right? Do we need the same public hearing for both?
No, it's one vote for one.
It's all one law.
It's one law.
The refuse collection as well, there's a refuse collection.
It's all one law.
Okay.
I mean, it hits two pieces of code.
Gotcha.
It's a one law, one law.
I think it's actually three. Three items.
One and three. Well, no, this is one.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Leighton.
Hi.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Mayor Palmer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, so anybody wishing to speak on a matter on hand here, comment on the code updates?
I'll just briefly say first, these are our changes that we've discussed at quite a bit of length regarding the LWRP. I think that it clarifies the code in important ways and also changes the notice requirements in a sensible way. And also follows along with what we'll discuss in terms of refuse collection to take care of some resident concerns. So I'm happy with these code changes.
Anybody from the public online? Any comments or...
I'm looking. Nothing you can add?
Okay.
I'll try it.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second?
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Leighton.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Mayor Palmer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, it's back to the board. Any further discussion?
Justin said, captured it pretty well.
I know, you summed it up.
Yeah, we discussed this in the next...
I know, we really have, so.
Do we have a number yet for this local law?
I think it's local law two.
Two?
I think so.
Two.
I think it's two.
Okay.
Or one, is it one? It's one.
Do we, I want to identify it as such when we make a motion or do you want to leave it blank until you are sure?
I'll fill it in. I think it's local law one. It's been a long year already.
Okay.
No, it has to be local law one. I haven't filed anything with the state.
Yeah.
So you can call it local law one, I'm good.
Okay, well, I've now retained a motion.
I'll make a motion to amend chapter 121, section 210-31.2A and section 173.15.b2 of the Village of Pittsburgh code. Does that help that we don't have to worry about whether it's law one or two?
You nailed it.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Leighton.
Hi.
Mayor Palmer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good to have that one done.
Yeah, yeah.
Really had to do with the five-day notice.
I know. Let's see. Why don't we, you know, why don't we just knock off the back entrance project?
Yep.
Just because it's the recurring theme.
It is a recurring theme. We're ready to go back out again. I didn't provide you all the specs because you've seen them before and they didn't change. The only thing that changed was the date, so if anybody really wants to redo those specs again, I'll be happy to provide them in case we... We're hopeful we might have a bidder. There was a bidder that reached out and said that they just had too many projects and they didn't want to bid on it. So we might very well get a bid this time around, which is what we're hoping for. So if I can have approval to go ahead and put this out to bid again.
So moved?
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Leighton.
Hi.
Trustee Leighton.
Hi.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Mayor Palmer.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you so much.
It's either the third or fourth time is the charm. I don't even know where we are with this, right?
In the sense I'm getting, this is really common, so we're just going to have to be patient and hopefully people will like us again and take our projects.
Yeah. It is the time of year, I guess, so...
Okay, so next up is the comita support letter. And just as a heads up, Dan Spitzer's out of town, so communication with him hasn't been consistent. He was just going to shoot a draft back to some of his comments that he had already sent to the board, so we have yet to hear back from him. So I think, Dorothea, you just put in the sample.
I put everybody, the one we received as...
Yeah, yeah. And you can receive comments as well on that.
Yes. Would you like me to read the comments now?
Sure.
All right. I did forward the two comments I've received to the board earlier, but I will read them for the public. Susan Julian, let's see here, 56 Mineral Avenue, please enter my comments below into the record for 75 mineral tax discussion this evening. I don't believe the village should be using taxpayer funds to subsidize 75 mineral. There are no benefits from the project to villagers other than property tax dollars. The villagers are profiting from the project development and receiving government money for cleaning up the site. No proposals to village leaders was made regarding tax breaks during the discussion prior to approving this project. Feels like a bait and switch to me. And then... Fran, Fran and Herb Cream, 17 Golf Avenue, please read, please forward this on behalf since we will be away till January 30th. We absolutely feel that in-person board needs are essential and...
Oh, that's...
Not to continue. And we absolutely do not support any tax relief for 75 mineral. Look at the history of this company and our many years' struggle to mitigate their plans to make development more compatible for our village codes and historic preservation. Please read, please forward this on behalf, since we will be away till January 30th. We absolutely feel that in-person board needs are essential and.
Oh, that's.
Not to continue, and we absolutely do not support any tax relief for 75 mineral. Look at the history of this company and our many years' struggle to mitigate their plans to make development more compatible to, for our village codes and historic preservation.
And then, and then I believe trustee Keating wasn't able to make it tonight. He's not feeling well, but I think he sent something else to you.
Yes, he did, and he has said everything he did as well. Um, decision is a simple one to me. The three village boards, the trustees, planning zoning board of appeals and historic preservation board, along with their council, drafted, approved and sent a letter to the applicant that made it clear that the village was willing to support its application for Comida. This was less than two years ago. Whether we're allowed to or not, I see no reason that this board should override. What those three village boards put forward is something that we'd be willing to do. I'd like to honor what the three boards told the applicant they'd be comfortable with as recently as February 2021 in their letter. To me, it's our word. Thank you, trustee Keating.
If I may just follow up on the, the point that trustee Keating raised. My understanding is that the, uh, the, the board's notion that we were willing to enter into this was brought up as part of a settlement discussion, and we did not complete a settlement with the applicant in that case. So to me, it doesn't really mean a whole lot if there's an agreement, since that was in the context of the broader discussion. At least as, as far as I am aware. The, the Comida program might be great, and I'd, I'd like to consider reasonable tax accommodations for the applicant. However, when, when I started studying this issue, um, it appears that, based on the letter that we have the, the draft here for, it's a particular provision of Comida, um, which is over a 10-year time span. There's an abatement that goes from 90% of property taxes down to 0% at the 10th year.
It's like 10% a year.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, my understanding, uh, based on some looking around, is that that would apply to, uh, village, town, county and then school taxes. Everything that's based on the, um, the taxable value of the, the property. That, that's at least based on some initial reading that I was doing. So it seems like it could be a considerable amount of money. Now, I realize this is, uh, they, they have the acronym pilot, so it's payments in lieu of taxes. I don't know what those payments are, so all I can, uh, all I've been able to find in my research so far is that there's significant tax abatement. That seems like it might have an impact, and I don't know what the payments are that, um, offset that. And without that information, I wouldn't be comfortable supporting a letter saying that we support such an abatement.
Yeah, I can give a little clarity, not much from my understanding of dealing with Comida. It's temper, it's based on the assessed, full assessment value, so we don't have that number even to start with. And I'm aware of, that's why I couldn't answer your question late. So then you hit, they go the first year zero, then 10% of that value. It's because we did it with a property, we just finished up doing that with a property we had on the village, and so it would increase 10% every year. And you did the same math, it's using the same tax rate we applied to the village tax bills.
And if the assessment goes up, then the percentage changes, yeah.
Yeah, we take the assessment value times the, you know, the, that tax rate to a percentage, so.
So I, I guess my, my concern is not so much with the assessed value, because that's something that's largely outside of per control. It's determined by the assessor.
Correct.
But if, if we're giving, I, I still don't understand if the payments are intended to be a 100% offset of that value or if it just, um, or if it's, it's different.
It's their percentage of the taxes they'll pay for that year. It's really, it's their tax payment. It's just, it's pilot, it's the way they put it. Because that way it's not run through the regular tax roll. We're given the number that they're, we're allowed to tax them, which is that 10% or 20%, 30%. The assessor will give me that number, I'll times it times our tax rate, and that's the bill that will go out.
So that's the formula.
Yeah, it's the formula. It'll go out just like the other village tax bills, but it goes out June 1st, except it's a letter from the clerk saying, here's your amount you owe for the pilot.
Dorothea, you said you, that we just recently went through this with another property.
Yes, there was a property down on Shape Place. I'm trying to think which one it was. I think it's Longwall. And it just came off.
I think it was.
Yeah. That was on there for, actually, it went, it stayed a pilot for a long, longer than.
Must have been more than 10 years.
It was more than 10 years, because it didn't, it just went back on the tax roll last year. But we were billing it the full amount.
And did we send a letter of support for that?
I don't know. That was before my time.
Just trying to figure out if.
We could find out.
Thing we do, or when new, you know.
There's another element to, to Comida, though, is that, um, you know, they put in the application whether we support it or not, and typically they would get it anyway. So one of the things, and, um, you know, again, this was something that attorney Spitzer was saying, that, um, if we craft a letter of support for portions of it, maybe not the restaurant part of it, because that could be a significant source of revenue, um, we potentially could have some control over what Comida decides to do. We know what they decide to do. They may leave out the restaurant, and so we would get the full benefit of the taxes from there. Either way, um, it is most likely that they would get Comida regardless of our letter. You know, that's what you were saying, Dorothea, in terms of your experience.
I've really never seen it get turned down.
You've never seen it turned down, yeah.
But, you know, that happens at a level above me. We usually just seen it turn around. I know at Webster, it was a white for all the time, and we've seen it with big projects.
Yeah.
We had a few pilots who went down in it.
Yeah, so even, even with, for example, the Longwall project down on Shape Place, even if we didn't support it or not, it would have potentially been irrelevant, because they just.
Yeah, they, they use their own criteria.
Okay. You know. No, yeah. Most of it's wild abatement.
It's been a.
No, no.
Oh, in terms of a letter?
Letter of support.
Okay. Okay.
We were never, we never knew. I mean, it was never, we were never involved.
Ah, so he must have just.
Just did it.
Yeah.
They're planning to do as well.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, they're, they're going ahead with it regardless.
So the, the danger, as I, as you're under, or as you stated, is that if we don't at least specify we support a piece of this and not the, not the restaurant, without that, they may.
Give them everything.
Give them everything.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was, that was what attorney Spitzer, the last conversation, which was, uh, and he put, I think he put that also in a letter to the board. So that, that could, not that it's leverage, but at least it gives us sort of an option of weighing in on it in some fashion. Yeah, Justin, you have another comment?
Yeah, I, I guess I don't, um, I still don't quite understand the restaurant portion and how that weighs into consideration one way or another, because the, the specific, uh, Comida program they're looking for is not based on, uh, revenue or sales tax. It's, it's specifically based on property assessment, right?
Dan, Dan made a point of saying, you never want to give them the most, you really want to keep that out. So, and that's why I wanted him to get back with the board and write a letter. I said, please draft something, so we understand what you're looking for. But he, as I said, he's out of town and he hasn't been, um, in communication. And for my part, I would really like to understand that, that what you've explained is very helpful, but I would, I would really like to see if the taxpayers answered their questions, which I have been receiving. That formula, whatever that percentage is and what generally it could mean in dollars and cents. Because as a taxpayer, I want to know that.
It really is going to come down to assessment. You're going to take assessment, let's go year one, 10%.
Twenty million dollar project. Let's pretend. Well, yeah, but, um, that's, Dan Spitzer also got back to, to us, and he said, that's, that is a question for the applicant that he probably would have a pretty good idea.
Yeah.
So that was maybe the additional information to gather. From the applicant before I feel comfortable. Yeah, I don't think we need to take any action tonight. You know, I think we can get more information. I agree. You know.
Yeah, they, no, that's, I can't do the math.
No, and I think the applicant needs to bring to the board to answer the questions up for the public before we as a board are prepared to make a decision that affects the taxpayers. Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Dave.
Two points. Jeff, can you answer when the tax break starts, when they start construction and completion? When is it dangerous to start?
I have no idea.
Okay. Well, thanks for, I support the Comida. My question is, it starts at the beginning. You're not going to much of an assessed value for a period of time as they construct. So you're giving up 9% of less. The other point that I'll say as a layperson, and I'm pretty confident this, name, why Dan Spitzer made that point. The assessments on apartments are very different than single residences. This is not the windfall. People think it is tax files, right? Looked at it five years ago, the estimate was $15,000 to $18,000 a year, because it's lower assessment. The restaurant would be commercial property. It's going to be assessed much higher. That's probably why Dan is making that statement.
That's what, that was why I wanted.
Very different tax rate.
That's great. You have that experience. That's helpful for us to hear. Thank you. Yes. Yeah, so. I think, given the. Hang on one second, excuse me.
You just finished a thought. Until it's constructed, the burden on the village in terms of services isn't until down the road after construction is really finished.
All the time.
And so forth, and that's sort of it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know this, but you would think the tax breaks start when it's finished.
I would, too.
Well, that's a question I asked.
It's a good question.
Because how do you assess something that's being built?
Is it going up?
Well, but I mean, I, I don't know, but just as a practical matter, I'm just saying, it, I'm thinking of the practical matter of it's done. This is what it, yeah.
I have no clue.
These are good questions, though.
That did come out last, that's a really good.
It's a sewer tax separate from the property tax. Are they paying a full rate for that?
For the sewer?
The sewer, I think, it's not a tax. Sewer is just.
That's my belief.
No, sewer is not a tax. There's, it's a use.
It's a use.
There's a misunderstanding. Pay my sewer tax, you're not paying sewer tax. Sometimes there is sewer tax, not tax, usage on your soup tax bill. In our case, we bill for the actual usage, so it's not a tax, so that, they would have subject.
And we identify it as a sewer rent, sewer rents.
Absolutely.
Because it's not a tax.
They'd be responsible for that.
Yeah. And, and Justin, hold on.
Yeah, I just wanted to restate my question maybe in a different way, that I, I, it might have been explained, and I'm just not getting it. But, um, my question is, when we take the tax abatements and the payments in lieu of tax, whatever they are, what's the percentage, um, impact on, on that revenue? So we don't need the exact number of the revenue.
It would, depending on the percentage, which year, year one, we wouldn't get any tax, we would never get a tax bill for 10 years, okay? But the payment in lieu of taxes is the tax bill, okay, technically.
That's what we get instead of.
Yeah, that's what we get, a percentage.
If you take a period over 10 years, there's no, no impact on revenue, you're saying?
Your tax bills, actually, it would be an increase every year, because year one, you wouldn't get nothing. Next year, you'd get 10% of what you would have given if it was 100%. So let's use, I'm going to go 10,000. It's, it's easy, yeah. So let's say your first year, instead of getting 10,000, you get 1,000. The following year, you get 2,000, up to, up to your 10,000, the full amount. Then, from that point on, you keep getting the 10,000.
Well, there is no payment that, um, that makes you whole, essentially. It's just in that loss.
It's just in that, it's just the loss until they get to whole.
I, I think, to me, that's, that's quite important, too, and, and.
Understand.
Yeah.
So let's, let's do some more research. Let's see if the applicant can give us some numbers. He owes us. You know, and hopefully, you know, we'll be able to get in touch with Dan Spitzer, who has done a lot of work with Comida. He's really familiar with this. And this is the board that needs to be accountable, you know, of due respect to the other two boards, I, as far as the settlement is concerned. But really, we're the ones that need to be accountable.
Yeah, I'm all for whatever the board wants.
Zach, did you have?
Yeah, just curious, do they pay property taxes?
They pay a minor tax bill right now.
Just for the.
Just for the property.
It's undeveloped.
They pay for undeveloped property. I can't tell you the. I, I can't tell you when it happens. I know, all I know is, is the text receiver, I received correspondence that says it's a pilot, it's come off the roll here, and it goes here, and you bill it separately.
Okay, so the action item is, let's do a little bit more research. Let's get, really nail this down, because these are really good points and really good questions. Hopefully, you know, attorney Spitzer will.
It's the applicant numbers we need, I think.
Okay. Yes, okay. Yeah, because I, you know, I think we have to nail it down. I mean, you know, we don't have to respond to a false sense of urgency from some other portion of the, of the world here, so.
Oh, we do have a queue in here.
Okay.
Okay, Peggy Caravarius, and she didn't give her address. Could you please provide that address for me? 81 South Main Street. Thank you, Zach.
He has a whole map in his head.
Yeah, he does.
I think his voice has changed a little.
Would like to know the current cost of the Monroe Ave project, what rents will be, and exactly are the tax implications. Please go into this with our eyes wide open. In response to Mr. Keating, this is only board of trustees decision.
Yeah, and I think, I think that was part of really what we've been discussing, so, so thanks, Peggy.
I think we answered.
Yep, any, anything else there?
Nope.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so we have those action items. Next up, we have the follow-up on the needs assessment of the Department of Public Works. And is, is Scott on, on board here?
Yes.
Okay.
So he's coming.
Okay.
He should be up for talking. Scott should be.
Oh, Scott, hi. Are you on, online here?
I am. I just, just got on. I got promoted to a panelist, so, so here I am.
Yeah, congratulations. Okay, so I know that, um, you know, we, we had put out the RFP, and I know you and Jeff and Zach have had some additional discussions as well.
Zach wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, so it's just Scott, Scott and Jeff, okay.
Yeah, and it's my fault, not my fault. I'm, you know, I'm the one who started the discussion. It really is just a, a math question, in a way. The guy is, we know we have a 1.2 acre parcel. We know we have 1.2 acres of work with it. We've got 10 acres allocated to parkland that is not reversible. Without going to the legislature, which leaves 1.2 acres for the DPW. It looked to me, just roughly, that they're using two and a half acres of that 11.2 acre parcel. Um, maybe a little less than that, I doubt it's more. Mapping is not my thing. And I just, I thought the focus really needs to be on how do you plan, can we plan a DPW on 1.2 acres of property? And in, in, in that line, I thought maybe the RFP was maybe slanted in the wrong direction. The board needed to be thinking about an RFP more directed to, uh, the 1.2 acre limitation, and how do we plan a DPW with 1.2 acres? Now, I think there's a little room above 1.2 acres. I, I think some of the driveway could be a true split between the two uses. But it's not going to be enough to make a whole league difference. I don't, I mean, again, I'll let Scott speak to that, because I'm, I'm not a mapper, but it looks to me like the access that you could use for the parkland is much closer to, to Grove Street than the DPW, so you gotta, you gotta get. Depends on what access you use to the, the parkland, I would guess. To figure out how much you could apportion to each use. And really, the, I don't know that how far that's going to get us in terms of. And, and they're really using more now than, than they're entitled to. When you look at, I mean, we have to also work something out with Canal Corp. To keep the parking lot and some of the storage area. So, I, I mean, and those are two things that we have, do not have a right to use right now.
So if we were to lose those, we're talking about even less?
Yeah, but I'm not, I, it's hard to believe that. We, we couldn't figure out a way to do it with the Canal Corp. But how we would do it on a permanent basis with the Canal Corp? Or, or a sum on a permanent basis, I don't know. They're not really, excuse me, they're, they're not really happy to give property interests away, you know, you could do easements if they would do that. But you would really have to work with them and see what they'd be willing to do.
Yeah, and typically, um, from my discussions with them just in general, the use of Canal Corp land that they're looking for would be, uh, you know, to activate the canal, to, you know, tie in with the canal system. But, you know, clearly, the DPW's been there for, you know, ever, you know, so.
And what we have right now on Shape Place down along through there is a renewable net, you know, it's.
Yeah.
It's not even a, it's really a handshake.
Yeah.
We'll tell you when to leave kind of thing.
Do we need to, to go to the Canal Corp version to get that squared away before we even try to figure out the other piece? Because, I mean, you're saying it's extremely unlikely that we wouldn't be able to continue to use that.
Certainly, I wouldn't want to go to the bank on that, but you could get, you could start getting an, an idea.
Or is it better to?
I'd certainly look, I'd take, I'd go both directions, really.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I mean, I'm now, I really step into Scott's territory.
So, so, um, since your territory has been stepped in, Scott, uh, do, do, you know, speak to some of this and, you know, your thoughts on this with the information at hand?
Well, well, Jeff and I spoke about it, um, and I think the, the theme of the phone call was, you know, is a, is a consultant going to be successful in the charge that we've identified for the consultant? If the issue of the, um, acreages is not really well-defined, as I think we agree it isn't. I guess the, the question in our discussion was, are we spending money wisely bringing a consultant in to pass through this fundamental aspect of things? Should we reconcile it before a consultant comes on board? I think that was the theme of our conversation, and, and I guess, having done the survey and, and looking at things, I think Jeff's question is a question well-asked. If I were a consultant coming into this project and I wanted to assume this role, I would want to know that, well, number one, that I had a good level of cooperation amongst all the parties, and number two, that I had the ability to be flexible and versatile with the, um, changes and the recommendations that I would make. And I think in the conversation I had with Jeff, I think we both acknowledged that we don't really think, uh, we don't really think that's the situation right now. We think that, um, there is, uh, there's an absolute, um, thinking about the property, and the versatility and the flexibility does not really seem to be there. So that was, that, that's how I, that's what I extracted from our conversation. Jeff, and you let me know if I said anything incorrectly.
Yeah, I think it was, I mean, from my perspective, it was more that our, we had a rock solid thing we had to deal with in terms of the parkland designation that we had to work around. Maybe that's the same way of saying it, that we're really locked into that problem. It's, it's, in my view, and this may not be a, some position that a lot of people agree with. I think that 10 acres can be a little more immediate-like than we've drawn it on this map. It can move in and out a little bit, you know, it could, we take here, give there, sort of situation. I don't think this line that we've drawn to get to 9.2 acres is a line, a permanent line. It's just an indication of where things might end up. But, you know, uh, so I think, yeah, I mean, I, that's what I think, is we got 10 acres locked in. And frankly, we've got to decide if that lock-in is going to work for the DPW. And if it's not, you know, I mean, we have to face the, you know, we have three possibilities. 1.2 acres can be made to work for the DPW. If it can't, then we have to go to the legislature to give it slight reduction. If, or we have to relocate them.
When you say go to the legislature to get a slight reduction of.
Of the 10 acres.
Oh, of the 10 acres, okay.
The line that the comp plan drew for us is already down to 9.2. So, you know, whether there would be another slight reduction to get to what the DPW can use, I don't know. But that's, that would for me be the first order of business, and maybe Renee's correct. We got to find out what Canal is willing to let us to do, let us do, given what we have on the ground right now. Maybe Scott, you, you see it differently, because you do this kind of stuff all the time.
Well, I, I don't think it's a bad idea to contact the Canal Corp and see what, um, flexibility they have. That would, that wouldn't be difficult. I'd be happy to make a call on the village's behalf um, over there and, uh, speak with their canal person, Kevin, I believe his name is, Kevin Karins, and find out, you know, what, what they think of the situation.
Scott, you said, um, you don't think it would be wise to put, you know, put this out to bid, because you're basically, um, not quite ready for an assessment, and we need to look at the DPW first. Is that something we can do internally? not quite ready for an assessment and we need to look at the DPW first. Is that something we can do internally? Do we, are we?
I, I guess the purpose of the, well, the conversation that Jeff and I had sort of centered around like, and I think Jeff kind of introduced it this way, having the consultant climb Mount Everest, I think was what you said, Jeff. And I, I thought that was a pretty interesting analogy and I think it was kind of accurate. Because with this, with the acreages outstanding as they are right now, the village is going to spend money on this individual to try to reconcile this issue, but the truth of the matter is, it's probably something that could be reconciled more easily in-house. And once it's reconciled, then the consultant could be activated. That's not to say that the RFP that's out right now, I believe, needs to be withdrawn. But I think this part of the homework should be accomplished so that the consultant can do what the consultant is probably good at, which is coming up with the other supporting work to make this project come together.
So, so would that be something, for example, like you, you and Zach could work on that because you're, here you are.
I mean, Zach and I could work on, you know, what, what his needs are. My my comment also to Jeff was, I think Zach is probably knows better what he needs to have in terms of area available more so than, than anyone. I mean, you could bring someone in to interview Zach and analyze his operations and operations of other public works facilities. And that would certainly be time and money spent, but could be a more efficient way of doing it by simply working with the people who do the job every day and know what they need in order to do their job.
Yes, yeah, sure. Lily, yeah.
This is a layman's question definitely here. Are we thinking that if the Canal Corp was open to acquiring or somehow leasing like they have in other places along the canal? Would that answer the, would that answer the need for how much property? Or you still would be lacking how much? About half an acre? Quarter of an acre?
I would guess that that would probably get us around 10th acre.
How much?
10th.
Yeah, because
10th of an acre at best can be that the line is drawn of the Canal Corp property is.
So it helps, but it doesn't answer the entire?
Not unless there was a complete site plan change. I mean, everything that we had was consolidated into one building. The overall usage has just changed what the requirement, portion of the cost.
Okay, so changing the orientation or, you know, consolidating, none of those things would really answer the question? I'm just trying to.
I'm not sure if I answered it. If the two tenths or so of an acre that we would get from the Canal Corp properties, if we were to get them somehow. And also the consolidation of our outbuildings into one common facility. And a better placement of it would probably allow us to be able to function on the one, I guess.
Two.
Four. 24 acres without including road, that's the way. I was going to see with that, because currently one of our cold storage buildings is, is actually located in the arboretum for this drawing, so. Yeah.
Okay. And I, when we started, when this, well, it was the previous board, some of us were on that board. Adopted the resolution to designate this land. I remember distinctly asking if there's enough room for growth for the DPW. And so I don't believe the intent was to try to shrink DPW by designating this land. And we've also got this other fear that has been going on since the very beginning that somehow the land designation would be decreased. So we've got two dynamics at play. I don't think there was ever an intention by designating this land to require DPW, yeah, to take away DPW.
Right.
We talked about giving you a little room for growth and the expectation was that there is a little room, not you could have some monster facility, but that there would be enough room because you are the thing that keeps our village going. It's, you know, this is an important piece of us. So we've got to balance these two things and I've been struggling with this ever since you emailed about it. Figuring out how to handle it, because I, I don't want anyone to think that there is an intention to shrink you guys or to try to take away the arboretum or shrink the arboretum. We've got to find a way to make these two things coexist.
So when you asked the question, was there enough room for the DPW to have the growth? What was the answer?
The answer was, was yes.
It was?
Yeah, no, we didn't say, you know, I we didn't specify.
Oh, okay, so it was just part of the discussion?
It was part of the discussion before.
Okay, just understanding. It's like there was some information that was produced at the time?
No, it was just a question. Does this designation allow enough room for the DPW to, to operate in the future?
Yeah, but there wasn't any like document or anything?
No, because we hadn't done a survey yet.
Yeah, there wasn't any survey?
That was part of the problem is that, you know, it was all a bit nebulous and maybe we could have done that better back then, but we didn't know as much. And I've designated land, I don't know how it goes. So those were my Yeah, so those are my two things. I don't think the intent of designating this land way back when, which it seems like a long time ago, I know it was only a few years ago, but was to take, was to take away or shrink DPW's ability to, to operate. And then we also, I don't believe it's the intention of this board to somehow try to make the arboretum smaller, but.
Yeah, not sure if that plan was ever on a piece of paper outside of someone's head, you know, as far as you understand it was, there was a plan, but.
Yeah.
I don't want to depend on my memory, but there was some sort of a, it was some sort of survey that was pointed to. But there was something that was
That night, the comp plan?
That was based on, that was produced. That's from my memory though, so.
Yeah, for this motion, for that.
What was available to us at the time, I guess.
That motion was, I don't think any of us, anybody on the board knew what was coming. I certainly didn't know what was coming. So I don't, I mean, we checked for minutes, but I don't remember.
I don't think there's a record of it.
No reference, maybe there was.
So excuse.
Go ahead.
You go ahead, I'll talk.
Okay.
Yeah, it's your turn.
I, I appreciate the thoughts from Jeff and from Scott here. I think I agree with, with most of it. And Jeff, I appreciate your email, your email that you sent a while ago and you just summarized most of it here. And Renee, I appreciate you reaching out to me as well to discuss this. And unfortunately, at that point, I hadn't had time to actually look at any maps yet or understand it. I did just do that for a couple of minutes before this meeting. Basically, the, so, and Scott jumped in if I say anything incorrectly. The arboretum lines that are added on top of the survey are from the, the shape that I gave you, which is basically just the comp plan drawing, right?
Yes.
And now I understand when you measure that area, it's probably about 9.2 acres. I didn't go back and measure that, but that sounds about right and that looks about right.
Yes.
I can, I can actually get, to me, that line was, and I think this is the right technical term. Again, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the intent was that that line would be wiggled a little bit.
Sure, that's the technical.
I mean, so, so basically, what, what you see is that if you follow that comp plan line, it cuts off the shed on Village Lane, Zach, right? And the shed is actually inside the arboretum. If you follow that comp plan line. And I don't think that was intended to be on. I think that it was really just a conceptual line. It also includes some of the, the property that's the Canal Corporation land. And, you know, you've really got to manipulate stuff a little bit. As Jeff mentioned, you can get closer to that 10 acre dedication if you take part of the lane. Count part of the lane as the access to the arboretum and as, as part of the arboretum, which makes sense to me too. In, in my map, so before this meeting, I just put together a really quick sketch map. And what I did is that I just extended the comp plan line. I drew out the building on Village Lane, so that's not part of the arboretum, because I don't think that was intended to be. So you carve that out, you carve out the other structures that are behind the DPW building, because they weren't intended to be there either, I don't think. And then you draw the line closer to the lane, so you will include the grassy area, you know, call that part the arboretum. And if you do that, which I think just kind of makes sense, like it's just kind of putting things where I think it was intended to be, you get 9.8 acres. You're really darned close already. And then if you further extend that, so we talked about possibly getting some land from the Canal Corporation for the DPW, where we're already encroaching. If you add a little bit onto that, because the Canal Corp line cuts a little bit further north there than it does in other places. You know, take some of that extra land from the Canal Corp there. And give, you know, part of it belongs to the arboretum, part of it belongs to the DPW. And I kind of just sketch that here. I think you're right on the market about 10 acres.
For the arboretum, what, what does that buy us for the DPW?
Well, I, so I think we need more rigorous line wiggling.
Yeah.
Although the plus or minus is really going to be
More rigorous what?
Line wiggling.
It's a technical term.
Really going to be a middle of wiggle room?
I, I don't know. I guess since we're talking about kind of taking this back to the, the board or to the village to better understand what that line is, because it was kind of conceptual. It's about right on the money, I think, if you actually do it carefully. But we need to do it a little more carefully and see what that acreage is. So I, I would just say, you know, my recommendation would be that if Scott could actually, I've got this drawing here that I think, you know, gets us to 9.8. You know, if this is kind of closer, then we're doing better. You can finesse a little bit more by adding in some of the Canal Corp thing, if there are amendments talking about that.
That 9.8 acres, is any of the needs of the DPW assessed within full bounds? Or is it just?
I, I don't know what the DPW needs are. I'm not able to assess those, you know.
And then we're coming, we're coming right back to that. I mean, you know, that's, that's the whole point of this, is that
What I did is
Where are we with the DPW needs?
If it's two acres, it's a 2.8.
Right, they're, they're an engine that runs our village, you know.
As everything exists right now, we need that, that whole yard for bulk storage of lots of different things that's come off of us. And that's got to be that 2.8 acres. I don't know, I didn't measure, but that's quite a bit of property. And again, we still don't have Canal Corp properties, so we can't necessarily just include that.
Scott, were you gonna, excuse me, one second. Scott, did you want to chime in?
Well, I, I think line wiggling is an interesting term for what I was saying. I think it's the same, same goal, which, which I I called the versatility and flexibility, I think, was how I called it. But I think if there is that to be found, you know, that's good. And I think it's somewhat of a trial and error approach as you enter this discussion and the scope, achieving this goal. And I think, once again, the the theme of the conversation that Jeff and I had was I think we both thought it would be wise to reconcile this issue so the consultant wouldn't have to deal with this particular issue that could be done in-house. And I would be happy to work with lines that Justin has created and I'd be happy to meet with Zach and, and do some back and forth. And, and try to come up with a solution that everybody can be happy with. And then I think your consultant will be a lot more effective because this issue will be taken care of.
And then we're looking at a consultant that would just be doing the arboretum landscape, or possibly, depending on what, what the outcome is of the internal look at the DPW needs. We may need to revise the RFP before it goes out, correct? Or do we already send it?
It's already out.
Okay, never mind.
No, that's, that's, no, that's okay. I mean, I, you know, when you get a consultant on board, you can, you know, obviously adjust things accordingly as, as the how you want. I mean, may, maybe, maybe the, the whole, well, the whole the whole project needs to be looked at. And maybe there's insufficient funding to do much for the DPW. I'm just guessing here. In which case, maybe, or maybe the priority is to do the arboretum first, which I suspect may be the case. You, you can judge at that point where you want to go with essentially the, the plan for development of this parcel. But I think that, you know, the point that we were making was the consultant could get hung up I think on this issue of the acreage that I think we're making a little bit of progress on in this discussion.
But, but if we bring it back in-house to kind of start with, let's go back with DPW, let's see where really where you are, what that need is, I think, that's the groundwork.
Produced by over six different variations of this.
Okay, you guys can
You know, kind of narrow it down to something that was including Justin's wiggle line and, and my wiggle line. We can come up with different variations of what everything's going to cost.
Yeah. Is it? When you designate two different parcels like this, can you, like, if DP, is there some sort of compromise where, yeah, technically it's an arboretum land? But there is a mutual agreement that the building can be on it? No, you can't. Okay, so we kind of get creative.
Needs within, like, if, like, the cold storage part will sit on the arboretum.
Yeah, so we need to wiggle that line.
If that was meant as like a maintenance facility for the arboretum can be included as the arboretum?
It would have to be for the arboretum. If it wasn't solely for the arboretum, you'd do some kind of apportionment.
Okay, so we could get some creative thoughts around that too.
Yeah, all of our equipment, you know, has some sort of purpose on the arboretum.
So a portion of it.
You got to have land, right?
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's land that's devoted to parkland use.
So why don't we do this? I mean, I think we, I think we know where we need to go and I think we're on agreement.
We've seen the same thing.
Yeah, so I, you know, I think just to kind of, you know, wrap this up, the action item, it appears to be, okay, the RFP went, went out, we don't have to take any action and we can amend it. But it seems like the homework is going to be done here. And that can be additional information for anybody who does get the RFP, you know. So I, I think we're all in agreement on that. That's kind of where we are right now. So anything else to add? Because I think that's, you know, part of
In terms of further action items, what I heard was that Scott, Trustee Lightfoot and Zach are going to work together to see how this can possibly be resolved. With me.
And Scott, you're going to reach out to the Canal Corporation as well?
That's right.
Yes, yes, I can, I can call over there tomorrow.
Okay, yeah.
Just a suggestion on that. I wonder if we want to, it seems like there are a couple of ways. Maybe we want to draw a shape on the Canal Corporation land so we know what we might be asking for before we call them up.
Go and figure out what we need.
Yeah, acreage and area.
Well, that goes back to the needs, you know, you guys getting together. Yes, exactly.
I, I think if we could tell the individual who I was going to contact, you know, with a little more accuracy, what we think we would like to lease potentially or whatever arrangement we could make, I think that, I think that would be helpful. But, you know, maybe the three of us should meet and put the survey on the table and do some scratching and and, and do some figuring. You know, the one thing we did as part of our survey is we did locate the occupation out there. So we do have the ability to, you know, calculate the acreages that are currently being used by the DPW. So we have some, some good information to work from. And then and then I do think it's kind of a trial and error with, with, with lines here and there and seeing how it can all work together. And, and I think if, if this part of the project can, you know, come to completion, I think the rest of it will, will go a whole lot better.
Yep.
So I'm just looking really quickly, what you do, your wiggling. There's two south, southern approachments on the canal, but if you drew a, drew a straight line from our property on the westernmost, that little corner of our property, which is can't read the letter.
P?
Which one?
Yeah, the one, the one that's Oh, this one right here.
That's an O.
That's no.
So if you go from O to the other, to loop those two together, you might pick up a little property, but so for getting something from Canal Corp, you'd be getting a straight line.
Yep, that's about it, I think.
If it was always delineated a certain distance off the canal path. If it was also delineated, a certain distance off the canal path continues the radius where the town properties are. But also another question, I guess, in regards to that is what the Canal Corp would allow us, um, focused on using that property.
Yeah, that's all.
That's part of the discussion, yeah.
When you go into the ask, that's a pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
You know, we're not taking too much. You already land that little piece of land locked in. Square.
That might pose a bigger problem.
Okay.
But we'll let's sort that, we can sort that out offline. We now know that we have an action, action items.
As I said, mapping is not my strength, so I'll shut up.
Thanks, Siri. Um, okay, so, okay, so Scott, we're, we're good to go on your end? And you can get, everybody will get together on this?
I, 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 I guess as I look at the action item, it, it sounds like, oh, the three of us should get together and sit down and, as I said, um, kind of do some creative line work and see what we come up with.
Okay.
It would be, I mean, I would suggest you do it in a place where there's a computer that you can figure, draw lines and figure, it's all the same time.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks, thanks so much, Scott. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, well done.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, see ya. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, thank you for our items here.
Nice dot.
Oh, thank you. I, I see, I get better. Yeah, the signage and ordinance updates regarding the Nice Dot project. Um, you know, there's, obviously there's been some changes with striping. We have our bump outs and all kinds of things going on. And so Renee and Zach and I, you know, walked the village. Then we also had a meeting with, um, the, the project engineer from Nice Dot. And we are also, you had in, you know, I think it's back in your packet, there was a, um, just a write-up of everything that they wanted us to look at, because some of the things don't match with the ordinances, because, you know. So Jeff, Jeff will be taking a look at that. And I know he's going to want to speak to that, but this is kind of a work in progress. Maybe not, maybe he wants to say nothing.
I mean, it's, they're, as they went through the village to finish up, they've got a subcontractor who's going to be putting up replacement signs. And so in their due diligence, they looked at our code and the signs and noticed some incongruities and said, these are the spots you need to either fix your code or remove the signs or put up signs or whatever. So based on that, we walked around the village. And the good news is we're getting additional parking, which is a new thing. They're actually giving us some agency over where we want to put some on-street parking on our arterial roads, which is great. So.
Okay, not on the ones that were mentioned by some of the residents? Not on South Main?
Part of South Main, we will retain the parking, but they, they, um, the way we are handling that is that there will be no delineation of parking spots up to a point. And then as it really narrows and we know it's dangerous and not safe, there'll just be no parking from beyond that point. Because really what we've seen is it's sorting itself out. In other words, you know, Mikey, we just said, don't go down there and ticket. Let's just see how it sorts out. And I've spoken with the churches, you know, sundizer. And it, it seems like it's, it's, it's working.
Okay. So we don't need to change anything in our parking code for that? Because right now it's allowed and Nice Dot said it can still be allowed, except for where the road is too narrow. Okay, nothing changes there. So people are parking there right now. We're, so we're going to make sure.
We're just doing it, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to make sure the parking signs, no parking signs are at the taper so that no one.
Just for public safety, really.
And then the other one that was discussed was north of the, um, between the dairy entrance and, uh, the pub, that area, because there's, they've, now, all the right turn lanes are a little longer than they used to be, because that's what is required now. But what we learned is it doesn't mean they're taking away our parking. They can coexist. So that, that was really good to hear. So that stays, the ones in front of Thirsty's stay, the one in front of, um, oh my gosh, what's Tri- or Tri-Piercings Building? What's that?
Oh, the Phoenix, yeah, the Phoenix right there.
Okay.
Oh, and then in front of Stella's, we got.
In front of Stella's, we're getting two new parking spots in front of Stella's Bridal.
On the Bank of, or Bank of America?
Yes, yes.
So.
So that'll be good.
Yeah.
They're not asking for larger signs anywhere that are larger than our code allows? That's not what they were talking about?
No.
Okay, that's what I wondered.
One of, one of the issues was that we are, we have no parking areas like the length of Monroe Ave, for instance. But we either have to get out of our code or sign like crazy.
Right. And they're going to pay for the signs, so that's why they need to know. And that's what, how this whole thing started.
What is it, every 200 feet or something, you have to have a sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it is, right? Yeah.
Every 200 feet from, um, South Main and North Main, west on Monroe Ave, all the way to the, it was like.
More signs.
They're anticipating, they would like to put more signs.
Or, or we have to change our code.
Right.
So, do we want so many signs?
Yeah, no, this is great.
This is good, no, here, here Renee out, because this is kind of the good news part.
So our active transportation plan and, you know, the state street neighbors would love to have parking on their side. I don't think there's enough, but it's another one we should just double check so that we've done our due diligence. But they're, um, they are allowing us to have parking on one side of Monroe. I mean, that was our idea, that's what we took to them, because that would give us enough room to have the emergency vehicles get by. And if there's a, you know, backup, um, the north side of Monroe, no wait, I've got it backwards, I'm sorry. The north side of Monroe, um, so the side we're on, um, is the side that we would put parking on, allow parking. Most of the neighbors there have long driveways. It's, they won't get used that much. But when, but when delivery vehicles come, when there are parties, when there are, you know, someone wants to park there, um, it does help calm traffic. So it is in our active transportation plan. And, um, just putting it on one side, we're going to start. There's not enough room for the fire trucks to get by if we put parking on both sides. Not that we think it's going to be heavily used parking, but.
Just occasional.
What is a leap forward is that we're having, they're giving us agency over decisions around street parking, which we, I, to my knowledge, is a new thing. So I think we've never.
It's always been created, we always assumed that we didn't have that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So you said one side of State Street also?
No, but I think that's too, I think that's too narrow. So I don't think that's going to change. But I was thinking about that in the shower today. We should definitely get out there in a manner, just to, to, to be sure. That's where I do my best thinking, I don't know why I said that.
That's where you're best saying.
One of the ideas come from, but yeah, we should just make sure, because the State Street neighbors would love that. I don't think there's enough room, otherwise Nice Dot would have put it on there.
Okay.
They did put this one on and said, you either need to change your, your ordinance to allow parking or to take, put up more signs. Because I don't think we have any signs there.
And then, um, just getting back really quickly to the two parking spots, as you come up to the four corners by Bank of America and Stella's, we're kind of looking at maybe just completely eliminating that right turn lane altogether. You know.
That's in our active transportation plan. In the summer, it was blocked off with a.
And it was fine.
And it was fine.
And it was safer for the buses to make that wider turn instead of trying to go closer to the, you know, the corner curb. So we're working towards that. But at least we got the two spots.
Right.
So are the two spots guaranteed, or is that something we had a.
Two spots are, no, two spots were guaranteed. Uh, we just need to change our parking ordinance.
We just imagine.
The lane is what we need to get permission, that's what, um, who did we meet with on Friday? Or, I mean, last week?
Kevin.
Kevin, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
He said to talk to, that you have to make a formal request.
Yep, yep. I've already put the phone call in just to get the wheels going here. Yeah.
Just one other question. So, um, did I understand correctly that the, so you can park where the, um, the delineate or the, uh, parking area, you can still park there even though it gets narrower? And we're just counting on people not to park where it's too narrow to actually fit their car?
Yeah, so, um, DPW will get out and put up the no parking as it gets closer to Jeff Road.
Per se, do.
Yeah.
Yeah, now, my other concern is that one of the things we've seen, without specifically delineated parking spaces, um, I spent a lot of time pulling in and out or out of Stonegate for practices. And I've noticed that people are closer to the, the street than they did when they had delineated spaces. And that makes it really difficult to see out, when you're turning left especially.
Are you parallel with the curb or the perpendicular line defining the.
Perpendicular.
Is that what you're saying?
A stop line to not get too close to.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, that's what the signs.
That's what the sign will do, the signs.
It's a great.
As we look at that and we realize we need to bump it back, definitely.
So that's, that's already works. I was just making sure.
Yeah, so you mean it's having enough daylighting so that you can see when you're coming out of your driveway. Yeah, and that's what, right now, there aren't many signs there at all. So, but we're going to make sure closer to Jeff Road and on either side of the intersections, which.
Great, yeah. So, that's one that I noticed, thank you.
Yeah, no, that's good to bring up, but.
Actually, I don't think they're supposed to get any parking between that.
Because of the crosswalk?
Yeah, the crosswalk and Stonegate. I think it's all supposed to end before the crosswalk.
See, you can see there, okay.
Yeah, so we are, of course, we're losing spaces because of the, the big wider crosswalk and because of the bump outs. And, you know, we've got the new pedestrian refuge, so we, and we might get some spots back there later as the fire department learns what they do or don't need. So we've lost some spots there, but for good reason. And then we're gaining some spots elsewhere. And just like from a traffic calming, you know, perspective and just making it more livable around here, this is great. I don't know why I'm so excited about having on-street parking, but I think it's that they're letting us choose, which is totally awesome.
So a little safer, yeah.
Yeah, and then we get to the side that is not working, we take it out of our, you know, I mean, we're having.
Yeah, we finally really have more control over it, you know, which is great.
Yeah.
Yeah, and any, any other thoughts on this? Because Jeff's sorting through, matching it up and, you know, and we're getting back with Nice Dot with, you know, the request for, for example.
Yeah, that just has to be sorted out by February, February, so, oh, 21st.
Yeah, we're, we're on it. It's just that they need to know that, you know, where the signs are going to go. That's all they need to know.
Yeah, no, I was just, I know, I was just.
Yeah, yeah, so it's all good. Okay, um, what's the memorials?
I would just like to request this, you know, so type with Nice Dot.
Uh-oh, don't push it.
How are you, B F I? To make, request application, um, for a bench installation along State Street. The mayor would like to choose the spot for the bench and make an application, send it in like we did last time, or maybe in the spring we could have a new bench. Okay, since it's budgeted and all set.
Yeah, and you said you don't need a pad for that.
We don't, you don't need a pad for that, do we?
No, unless you want to open it, that's up to us.
Okay, but we can.
Yeah, no, just as long as, um, what we propose for the permit to the state shows that it's going to be anchored in a fashion that is suitable. So, I mean, we might have to reach out to Scott Harder to draw some generic that we can continuously propose to.
Oh, that's a good idea, yeah. Follow through with that, that, I really appreciate it.
So.
I don't have to send the handwritten notes now.
No, it's not an easy process, is it?
I'm sorry?
It's not an easy process, is it?
Not at all.
So the, the concrete pad was only because of the proximity to the.
Yeah, so I asked them to incorporate that into the, um, across our curb route, just so it's a little more, yeah, a little more visually appealing and approachable. You know, we could plan around it and stuff like that. But since we knew that we wanted the bench in that proximity, it was just like, a, a seemingly a good fit and a way for us to, um, to have something set on something that they designed, so we couldn't really argue, you know, the, the way that we're putting it in.
The women's public are very specific about where they.
Yeah, they really wanted it there.
Yeah, they did it all. A lot of the utilities, too, and they're ready.
This way, the village is deciding where this bench goes, so there's some flexibility.
Yeah.
With some wiggle.
Lines wiggling.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Zach.
Oh, did you put your hand up?
Yeah, I'm sorry, there was a public comment.
Oh.
I just want to relate to the board. Christine Nulay, five, Stonegate. Thank you for your work to get the streetlights on in South Main up and running. It makes significant difference. Curious about the widening of the road shoulders on South Main going through Jefferson. The widening is causing all kinds of traffic issues when people make a left-hand turn. Others are trying to go around them on the right. I have witnessed accidents and been in near accidents myself. The widening only encourages people to be more aggressive in their drive.
The road didn't actually get wider. It wasn't widened.
Yeah, just the, um, the paint was changed.
Yeah, so the curb radius is exactly the same. So I wonder what, um, she's saying right at Jeffrey. We might need to follow up.
They're right in, right in West Jefferson on the South Main.
Yeah.
It's not good.
No, that's not what she's talking about. She's talking about the current existing, I mean, the current existing.
Do they provide more, the illusion of more room to the turning lane?
Yes, because of how they, they narrowed the traffic lane right there. So now you've got actually two.
In other side of Turning Lake.
Yes, let's ask them about that.
Yeah. But it wasn't, just so she knows, like, there was no actual widening. But yes, the paint makes it.
It's like, it's more dangerous.
I'm adding it to the list.
Really not ruined.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they did change that.
The illusion is there.
Yeah, the illusion of, like, we can put three cars there.
Well, it's important, you know, when the painting, it gives people visual cues, you know?
So, yeah, so we should look at that.
Yeah, so I have that down as, as another.
You see that all the time, right at the corner of Clover and Jefferson,